Testimonial of the presenters, please be advised that you are here today to speak. Any kind of presentations you are before the commissioners' court and under oath. 1.5 Public comments. No public comments. 1.6 Approval of minutes of regular meeting October 28, 2024. Subject 20 corrections. I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Presentation of utilizing landbanks and CDBG funds, NHS of Dimmitt County, Inc.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you, Judge. Representing, they put Housing Services of Dimmitt County, I'm Michael Coats. We're going to be talking about utilizing landbanks and CDBG funds for affordable housing. I am the grants compliance officer. And we're going to be exploring how landbanks and CDBG funds can address affordable housing needs and support community development and what we can do as a partnership. So far, this is what, just a few pictures around Dimmitt County of what we have so far. Now, what can we do with those properties? Right now, we have about 33.3% of households are considered cost burdened. The burden amplified by Dimmitt County's low median income, which is around $27,374, which is significantly below the national and state averages. We are located and considered a colonias, and those have unique housing challenges with the infrastructure and affordable housing development we lag behind. What is a landbank? A long-term benefits is a public or nonprofit organization created to acquire, manage, and repurpose vacant, abandoned, and tax delinquent properties. The key benefits would be to return the underutilized properties to productive use, therefore boosting the local tax base. We're going to create affordable housing opportunities by acquiring the locks or the homes for rehabilitation. We want to support community revitalization efforts in areas with declining property values or high vacancy rates. And of course, this is also going to be a workforce development program.
What does small child see when standing on the front porch looking where it surrounds them? If it's a abandoned house sitting across the street when she sees her fifth birthday, her eighth birthday, and her 10th birthday, or above birthday? The message is that we don't care enough about that child to do something about what she sees every single day standing on her front porch. The landbank goes out and turns that vacant, abandoned, empty house into something green and beautiful, or into another family home. What message does that send to that small child that she has value? We can affect that. We can make a difference in the life of that child for the rest of her life. And we can change that story for that kid. We've done something really important.
So, I just came back from Washington DC, and Genesee Landbank is operating in Detroit, Michigan. And we all know and familiar with what happened in Detroit with the movement of all the car auto industry that left the area dilapidated. And they're returning the community, and that's the same thing I want to do here with Dimmitt County. This is what we're looking at currently with the tax delinquent properties from the recent list. Asherton has a total of 15 properties. Big Wells, 19 total. Carrizo Springs, we're sitting at 58 total tax delinquent. And then Catarina is two. That converted into dollars, if we just look at Dimmitt County alone, the annual property taxes, we should be getting for one property is around, what, 20? No, total properties, $21,000. Over a five-year period, we're missing out on $105,000 in 13, uh, 105,000. Here is what we need and what I'm proposing, requesting. The tax foreclosure process with a landbank, you have the ability as municipality to transfer the foreclosed, delinquent properties directly to the landbank instead of auctioning them, allowing a strategic redevelopment for community benefit. You also have the ability to directly transfer an agreement with the landbank to expedite property transfers without public auctions, supporting the rapid revitalization and use of community projects. And then right of first refusal. The landbanks are given the first option to acquire the tax delinquent properties before they go to auction, prioritizing the projects that align with the local development goals. The CDBG part of this, my understanding is Dimmitt County has a grant writer. The application is open right now. There's two different types of grants that can help also support this initiative. You have the block grant, which is an amount of $750,000. And then we have the colonial fund construction. That one is $1 million. The grant process is, the application is still the same for both of them. I provided the packet. I have more information if you need as well. But the first phase is just registering by December 9th and just putting your info in, and then they'll review and see if we are an area of need, and then we'll be requesting through the next steps. That can also help support the initiative of the landbank. What we are also asking is in-kind land donations. Please consider donating vacant or tax delinquent properties to help us provide affordable housing options for low and moderate income families. By collaborating together on land contributions, we can bring essential resources and stability to families in Dimmitt County. Also requesting that for a low interest or deferred loan, so we can help accelerate our work in creating affordable housing and revitalization in neighborhoods. We request a low interest loan or deferred payment program. This support should allow us to undertake more projects and amplify our community impact. Help also with expediting the permitting and reduce fees for the affordable housing and community development initiatives. It will help us also to cut costs and complete the projects faster. It also will help us bring new housing options and community resources in the family need. We're going to also be helping, requesting that you share data and planning support. This helps the property status, demographic trends. This insight will allow us to align our projects with the most critical community needs and serve Dimmitt County's residents more effectively. And last but not least, public awareness. A shared opportunity for us to have public campaigns that raise awareness about affordable housing benefits and community projects. Building this shared understanding with the public will be instrumental in securing support and ensuring our project's long-term success. What we'll be doing, NHS is going to be doing as our next steps, we're going to be establishing an official landbank priorities, policies, and procedures according to Chapter 37, 9E of the Urban Landbank Program. I provided that law as well. Which is going to define strategic priorities for property acquisition, management, and repurposing. And we're going to set clear policies, procedures for property disposition and development. We are also going to draft and approve landbank articles and corporation. We're going to adopt landbank bylaws, review and update landbank policies, set guidelines for other buyers, especially because we want, we're partnered with USDA Section 502 loan program. So this is going to be our sole purpose to help facilitate the needs of Dimmitt County. Remember, investing what is comfortable is rarely profitable. We're not in this to make a lot of money. What we're in this for is to provide homes to low-income people and bring people back to Dimmitt County. Thank you.
I have some questions, Judge. Coats, please.
Yes, sir.
Does the information of the Board of Directors, the men and the staff, uh, so and so?
I think it's not from your leadership. My deal with your 80s, what Michael is proposing, we didn't 80s, under Commissioners, Commissioner Justin Gere, Commissioner, it's appeal, okay, and our, and we addressed the low-income housing in Carrizo, Cheto, Big Wells, and Catarina. I'm not going to be, I'm, it's a long, much longer, but I'd like for us to go back where we started back in the 80s. Address some of the low-income housing, some of the dilapidated housing, and some of the dilapidated, dilapidated living lives. Michael is my son-in-law. He's married to my daughter Vanessa. She works in a hospital here, is a resident dietitian. Michael's a retired school teacher, and he's also a sort of proposal writer. And I asked you if he would help us, say we can go back, we didn't get it. There's a different, it's a different concept now. There's a lot of new stuff that, that is beyond my capacity, and I need, I need some help to address those, those new concepts. What I'd like to do before, before I go on the sunset, I do like for us to go back to Sukent, address some of those, those, so when you have the old houses and lots of left-day homes and Big Wells and, and that, I'd like to see, I'd like to ask Commissioners' board if we can address some of these old houses, with the old corporation, and get, address some of these houses. I'd like for us to go back to affordable housing. We've been doing, we've been doing new housing. It's a $250,000 on our home, but we kind of miss the low-income families, and we want to, we want to go back and address some of the low-income and more-income families and see if we can address some of those, those cases. Is there any question I can answer? Probably Michael can answer better for me, because all this is a brand-new concept to me. When we addressed, when we did this project back in the 80s, just went to the state, we requested money, and they, and they incorporated money. In that time, in that time, the governor was more white, so we didn't have no problem. They were Democrat. Now, now things are different, but I think Michael can handle this. So I'm just asking the Congress and Commissioners' Board. Thank you.
Commissioner Strada, have a question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Strada, by any chance, do you know or remember the board back in the 80s about how many homes they were able to provide for the low-income communities?
Well, he's proposing, we start with five, you know. And I know where the CDBG, I've been, I've been part of the workforce since the 80s, so I know how the CDBG works. And, uh, Michael needs to learn how money is allocated, it's in a nine-county region, but, uh, he's proposing to see if we can, we can address the CDBG money. And I think he's looking for other funding throughout the federal, throughout the, uh, other federal agencies. And things work out the way we hoped. Maybe the new year will bring new funding under the federal level. So, uh, but he was proposing, let's start with five houses in Seagull. And I don't, you're starting Carrizo? Well, starting Carrizo. Now, some of these properties that are, that are, he's talking about no name or, or tax purposes. I was trying to, I was trying to tell him that there's five tax entities, the county, the city, the school, the hospital, the district. They all have a section. So he's got people working out, you know, close to those five entities. But if, I don't know, when we did it back in the 80s, we were able to generate our money to help and buy some of the vacant lives. So I don't know, I don't know how much, I think he's talking about half a million, about half a million to struggle with. I was not seeing.
Thank you, Commissioner Strada.
Thank you.
That was one of my questions, had we used this program in Dimmitt County before, and you answered that. Another concern with the elderly, especially those in the nursing home, is, you know, families place in the nursing home, and they're told to prepare Lady Bird Johnson's deed, which more to people like the state. If their property is conveyed or transferred over, they may lose benefits. Is there some way around that so that if they participate in the program, they won't lose their benefits and won't have the money to pay for the nursing home and other services they need?
So you mean if the house is?
Usually they go to nursing homes, and the house is made, nobody's living there, and it comes to the napitated and a nice world for the community. And then the family's side over who's going to pay for the house? But if this is another option, can they participate without losing their benefits? Because if the, the price value is $50,000, and they have a full three benefits, sometimes they have to use up the $50,000 for the received income amount before they re-qualify for benefits. So we just want to make sure that we educate the public it's not going to affect the benefits.
So if we, if, if that's, that's going to be a judgment call for the board that we create for the Land, for our landbank, if we turn it into a rental property, if, if we vote to acquire the property and take it from them, if we turn it back into a rental property, then of course we get to set the payment amount. And if you're looking at a house that's, for example, say they hold $5,000 as back taxes, it doesn't take that much for us to rehabilitate it. You're looking still at a low-income rent. We're not going to, we're not trying to make a big profit. So the answer to your question, they will still be able to benefit. If we do this correctly, they still would be able to finish their vehicle.
Just for discussion, I mean, if they're, uh, take action, so when we put it on the agenda, we can discuss all of that. Just for information, of your company. So we're not taking any action, so.
I understand that we aren't taking the action, but it is, so you're more informed about the needs, because, you know, you have constituents that are going to ask you about this program or its conditions, but I mean, if you're not fully informed, then how can you decide?
I understand, but, sorry, this is for information. And I appreciate your thinking, because this is true, but right now, we're just, this is just information.
I want to ask you one question, second.
Thank you.
2.2 Presentation, recognizing our county auditor, Mr. Carlos Paredes. Mr. Paredes was the newly-elected president of the Texas Association of County Auditors here for 2024. So if we could have Mr. Paredes come up and have a round of applause, and if you want to say a couple of words, Mr. Paredes.
Thank you for recognizing that.
3.1 Approval of bonds.
No bonds, yes.
No action. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval for the 365th Clerk, Alyssa Garcia, to attend the 2024 LGS Annual User Conference, November 19th through the 22nd, in Irving, Texas.
Sorry, we're getting used to this tablet system.
No, we have our, our new system as well, so I know, I'm very familiar with.
I won't be going back to the paper.
It's definitely in the positive direction.
Motion to approve. I have a motion, right, Commissioner Paredes? Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Paredes, please. Yes, ma'am. 3.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from County Extension Agent, Ms. Alyssa Cruz, for the month of October 2024. I've been advised that Ms. Cruz is not going to be here today. So I will accept a motion to table. I have a motion to table by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
I have a second. My Commissioner Calmona, Alonso Calmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from FCH Agent, Ms. Clarissa Munoz, for the month of October 2024.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we had a busy month in October, and one of the things I wanted, events I wanted to highlight was the fishing day. And we had over 250 youth members participate, all members in the community. We think there's a little bit more that didn't sign in, come sign in, so it might have been closer to 300, but it's a successful event, and we're hoping to have it again next year in October with the Palm Sock.
Any questions of Ms. Munoz?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. 3.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Rodeo Arena Coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Ronde, for the month of September and October 2024.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Any questions of Ms. Ronde?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ronde. 3.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Rambllo, Joey Rivera, for the month of October 2024.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning. Should I ask that?
Motion to approve. Give me one second, Commissioner. I know. Are there any questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report, excuse me, from Precinct 3, Mr. Roberto Balderas, Juventino Torres, for the month of October 2024.
Good morning, Ms. Ronde.
Good morning. Any questions of Constable Balderas?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 1, Mr. Alfred Castaneda, for the month of October 2024.
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Noguera. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 4, Mr. Jose Galván, for the month of October 2024.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Galván.
Questions of Mr. Galván?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Galván.
Thank you, Judge.
3.10 Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Airport, for the month of October 2024. Morning.
Morning.
Any questions for the Airport Report?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.11 Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval of 2025 Ramp Program Airport. Mr. M, do we have any information regarding this ramp program? All in, no, is that you put a, you drafted a statement regarding that the ramp program for 2024 has expired? So just for clarification purposes, what is it that you're needing the Commissioners' Court to?
The ramp's a new one, every year, so it's a new $100,000.
So essentially, you're asking, you're getting $100,000 from the state?
Yeah, every year. It's just re-renewal that 2024 ended, so this is for this new coming year, so we could get reimbursed for certain things like the A laws, that we pay $6,000 a month annually on paying anything, the payments, and like I said, the Friday, then March, we like to do the program, get the airport with the pricing there, and so we can get reimbursed.
Are there questions? Questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a question by Commissioner Calmona. We have a question by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
I was informed that there's a lot of wall hogs on the runway, etc.
Not on the runway, but they did break up the fence, the steel fence, but yeah, we do have gone with the holes that they made. I don't know what else to do about it. We never had any action for the gate on the runway or anything like that. But mainly at night when they go, so I have to go and inspect the fence and patch up some of the fence. But yeah, there's, you know, we have to have trouble walls.
If you run into bugs, you can let Commissioner Uranda get them off, or they can go another, they answer whatever is in there. Just don't want to accidentally.
Yeah, we never had any, but I could go around, but there are holes on them. They do make holes there in the dirt and everything.
Let me know if you come across anything like that, because we did find a gear inside the golf course, which the golf course and the runway are put together at the same place, so we definitely go and talk, get them to the golf course.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we never had any issue, accidents with air cars. I think the last one was, was probably like in 95, around the middle of the year. But that was before we had the fence.
I said, Commissioner, you can see these tires, but it's really a...
Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
You know, so can I get one of them, pretty through the whole stick actually?
Yeah.
He should be, he's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What other questions for the ramp program? No, we haven't yet. It was, you guys started to ask questions. Yes, ma'am. That's why I was asking. I don't have anything in regards to it.
I, you guys submitted the copy of the ramp.
The ramp?
Yeah, the whole, I think it's like 13 pages.
The one we have here says 2024.
Really?
Yeah, it doesn't say.
That's a wrong one.
That's the wrong one.
Yeah, I submitted the 2025, it was 13 pages. And it's supposed to be signed and everything, but I guess I'll go back.
If you can submit the 2025, Ms. Edonan, this is notifying me that the one you submitted is a 2024. So that's why she, she didn't include it on here, because you submitted the 2024 ramp, and we need...
Yeah, that's right. Oh, thanks for that, the wrong one.
It's okay. Yeah, you can just submit the correct one, please. I'll entertain a motion to approve with the stipulation that he is going to submit the proper 2025 ramp program.
Soon.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
The same as the dates.
Just the dates are different. Okay, if you can submit the 2025, sir, please, appreciate it. Have a good day. 3.12 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly report from the Dimi County Golf Course for the month of October 2024.
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.13 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for lease agreement for postage meter at county clerk's office.
Judge, Commissioner, this is just a renewal, no, no increases in the monthly payment, just a renewal.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? And just for the record, this is to approve the renewal lease as indicated by our county clerk. He has indicated that there has been no increase in that lease. I do have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona and a second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.14 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Address the purchase of building located on 100 North Ford Street, Carrizo Springs, Texas. Petri Building with the clarification that Judge JP 4 Martinez does not want to move to Carrizo Springs or the Petri Building. Discuss what building will be utilized for Precinct 1.
Judge, for the record, I request this to be put on the agenda, placed on the agenda.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. What was that? I just...
My mic working?
I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
I said, for the record, I requested this to be placed on the agenda for, for informational purposes. I know initially, when we brought this up, we spoke about having a plan of what the intent was for this building. And for transparency purposes and clarification, I requested. However, for the record, I have not spoken to JP Martinez. And being that this is placed, since I placed it on the agenda, just notice the agenda is raised this way. I don't want to misinterpret somebody or miscommunicate to anybody that I have direct communication with JP Martinez in regards to him not wanting to move to the, to this building. But I requested it placed on the agenda so that we could figure out what exactly we're using the building for before the purchase is placed.
Just want to respect that table until we put it up.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Good morning, your honor, commissioners. The only reason I'm here is because I was informed by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. We, they were gonna buy the building, or they bought the building, and that we might move over there. And I said, well, right back, I said, no. And I said, let me think about it. And then I thought about it, it didn't take me long before I said, no. I do not want to move to Carrizo Springs. I do not want to move my office over there for a lot of reasons. Mainly because a lot of people from Asherton have told me, because they're still pending on the building that was going to be built. Back in 2009, it was approved by Commissioners' Court. We're still waiting on that. And for those reasons, I pledged with my people in Asherton, Brazil, and, and Catarinas. For those reasons, I prefer not to move to Carrizo Springs. At least not while I'm there. I just wanted to make it clear, and please, great speculation, sir. Thank you, Juanes. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have, I just want to understand that I didn't ever spoke to you, but just...
I think that you're going back to what you're saying, but if I'm not mistaken, the building has been purchased. I mean, we approved to purchase the building. So I, I know that Commissioner wants it to table until we decide what we're going to do to purchase. But from my distinct understanding, we approved to purchase the building at the last Commissioners' Court meeting. And for the record, because I know that Mr. Pereira also was, or advised my office, not me directly, but advised my office, that he was under the understanding that him and Mr. Ortiz were also going to move over there with Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Judge Martinez, and Constable Galván to the new building. I want to make the record very clear that at the last Commissioners' Court meeting, I made them, I didn't make the motion, but I warranted, if you will, the motion that that facility would be used specifically to house Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Precinct 4507, JP Martinez, Justice of the Peace, Precinct 4507, and Constable Galván, Precinct 4507, Constable. That's the way I understood it, that it was going to be specifically for those three individuals and those three individuals only. I know Mr. Pereira understood it differently. I understand you understood it differently, Commissioner. But that's the way that I posed it when I put it into the record. Obviously, Judge Martinez does not want to move in there anymore. I don't know about Mr. Galván or Constable Galván, if he wants to move into that building.
Mr. Galván has never had an office in Asherton since I've been here, or he's been in office. His paperwork is done by the JP's office. I know his tenure should be, is almost over in less than a month and a half. And the new commissioner, the new constable in the back, Mr. Rosas, will be taking office in January. I spoke to Mr. Rosas, and he stated that he would like an office, and there's never been an office for Mr. Galván in, in his precinct, which is 4507. And he stated he would like an office here at the Petri Building. And I'm glad you brought it up, Mr. Uranda, on the last part where you had spoken to clarify that Mr. Martinez didn't want to move. I know I had spoken to Mr. Martinez on Tuesday, and he stated that he didn't want to move. I said, okay, I'm just letting you know what we're doing. We're buying the building. This is what we're getting, this is an option whoever wants to move. Mr. Galván can move for the last month and a half, and he has an office where he can stay. I don't know where his office is, because he's never had an office. And then when I saw this agenda, I said, wait a minute. How did Mr. Uranda put it in the agenda that he spoke to Mr. Martinez when Commissioners' Court ended after 1 o'clock? And after 1 o'clock, agendas are due at noon. So I said, how did he put it in the agenda that he spoke to Mr. Martinez when agendas are due at noon and Commissioners' Court ended? So I'm glad you clarified that, Mr. Uranda, because that was my question I was going to ask. Also, and Mr. Martinez, by all means, if you don't want to move, that is your choice. You don't have to move. But we bought the building for us. And to me, I said, okay, the other buildings are being, we have a constable and a JP building built in Big Wall. And it's only two elected officials in there. Mr. Carmona has his own office, his own building. So I don't know what is the issue. Will he approve to purchase the building?
I don't know. You all know, back in 2009, it was approved by Commissioners' Court to build a building for Justice of the Peace, Precinct 4, the Constable Precinct 4. They labeled that information on the whole courthouse. It's going to be Precinct 4, Precinct 3, brand new building, NX building, and the arena. Everything was built, and extra builds were built over the years, except JP 4, Justice of the Peace, and Constable office in Asherton.
It's not just you two, it's three. Precinct 4, Constable, Precinct, Precinct 4, JP Martinez, and Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Commissioner Alonso Carmona was never involved in the discussion back in 2009.
Yes, it was.
It was just JP office and a constable office.
You're wrong, sir.
I don't know. I don't know, because I believe nobody was here. The one that came in was Commissioner Carmona. I don't know if you were there or not. Maybe it was before you, because it was Commissioner Martinez, Longoria, Jaime, and I believe it was Pierre back then.
But when we came in.
Yeah.
When we came in, we addressed it for y'all three.
Well, I don't know. I wasn't aware, nobody talked to me.
You attend the meetings. It was done for y'all three. Commissioner Alonso Carmona, yourself, and, and the constable.
It was like that, and I have a diagram of the picture.
I wanted to clarify.
I have a diagram of the office it was going to be built.
You wanted to clarify.
Where we purchased the building.
I know.
No, that's it.
Well, what if I make, I only, I'm just, I just put another four, for, just to, for the understanding, so people know. Because I didn't want to mislead anybody in thinking that I had to talk to you. But all I'm saying is, if you're not going to move in there, that obviously leaves enough room to perhaps allow Pereira's office and Commissioner Alonso Carmona and the constable to move in there, because it's, it's a big building, you know, just, just to be able to make...
Yes, and I would say no. We're not going to move, and I'm going to stay with my people in Asherton, Brazil, and Catarinas. They don't want, they're still waiting on the building, if it's ever going to be built during my time or after.
I understand that, Judge. I respect your decision, whatever you decide, but we're just, I'm just trying to make the best use of the building as possible.
No, no, I understand, that's fine. I mean, use it for whatever it is.
So there's no action?
Is, is Constable, Rofus here too?
Judge, one thing that I would like to say, I would like to congratulate Judge Martinez for not wanting to move to Carrizo. One of the things that I've been reading in here, Judge and I, some of the people in here, or residents of Arlington, who belong to Dimi County. Years ago, the Olympia of Arlington moved to Carrizo Springs. Years ago, the school of Arlington was called, it was Carrizo. And now, the office of the judge will be moved to Carrizo, hopefully not. We serve this country, Judge and I. We have been doing a lot of things for, for the county. We don't fight for the city of Arlington, nobody will. We're proud to be citizens of Arlington. We're committed to stay in Arlington for one way or another. And to top it off, Precinct 4, the judge and his office are the ones that generate more money for the county of Dimi. I'm proud of Judge Martinez and his constituents. We're there to help the people and to all the people, not only for Arlington, but for all the people. Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Galván, I applaud Mr. Martinez. If he doesn't want to move, he doesn't have to move. But let's not forget that we serve constituents in Precinct 4, 5, and 7, same as you.
I would say, people of ours in Asherton say, we're the forgotten town in Dimi County, because everybody else got built, except us. What do you read?
Since there's no action, I'm not going to call my two successors.
What was that, Commissioner? I am sorry, I didn't...
I said, since there's no action, I'm not going to call my two successors.
Go ahead.
I will. I never got built an office. You don't see me complaining. I never got anything. I was put in the fire station because, since I was part of the fire station, I never complained that I never had an office. I worked wherever they designated my spot. So you can't say that you were the only one that was left out without getting a building. So was I. But again, you never hear me say, oh, I'm the owner. And yes, I'm in Dimi County, and I'm my precinct. But Judge, just to let you know, I was never built an office. And I never want to use taxpayers' money just to create an office for me and...
No, I just, I'm just talking for the, we in Asherton, we go here, with our taxpayers too. We pay county taxes here in Dimi County.
So that's my precinct.
And that's why, we just don't want to be forgotten.
So that's my precinct, and I never say that for that.
No, that's fine. It's, let's be realistic and honest. Justice of the Peace officer, of course, they're inside the building. Commissioners, you work 50, 60% out there in the fields, whatever you have to do. I'm not exactly sure, and I don't care, but I do care about my Justice of the Peace. They call it, Martinez, you're still in the shoebox office, because it's only two rooms. I don't know. I have invited all of you to go over there, visit my, my office, but I haven't seen nobody within a while, Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
I'm there 100% of my time. I don't, if we want to go there, Mr. Martinez, I would be very careful with your words. Very careful.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, your honor, commissioners.
3.15 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to purchase a mower max prime mover for Precinct 2. Motion to approve. Excuse me?
Hold on.
Are there any questions?
The mower? The one I told you?
Oh, the one we're looking at?
Yes.
Judge, I'm going to, I'm going to get the map.
Go ahead.
The only thing I talked to, to be sure, I don't know about, when we're going to get the machine back. In fact, the Camry are going to have two machines, extremely similar to this one. For the price of it, it seems kind of high, but you know, I don't know, it doesn't, because it's financially. We do have two machines, and just to make, you know, he has used it in a fashion. It is preferable, and he needs it, times his effort. It's never been denied. Times his effort. It's never been denied. I just wanted to make it clear, you know, like, we do have two machines that do the same thing, but...
Commissioner, that's my motion to press.
What? How much does it cost?
Two thousand.
Do we have... Go ahead, Commissioner.
Respect to everybody, you know, I hate to borrow stuff. I've been trying to borrow a deal. It broke, and nobody else. We broke it, and I really do need it to continue over here. But it's leaking oil, nobody knows, since day one, it broke. So if I go and borrow it, that means I'm gonna move it, it's gonna start leaking oil again, then I have to fix it. You know, it's very hard to borrow stuff from other commissioners, because if something goes wrong, you're using it, you're the one that's gotta fix it. That's what we all agree on. If you break it, you fix it. And it's not right for us to borrow something that is broken already, and then we have to fix it. That lift is still sitting there, and I can get my man to fix it, but I can't even use it. And I ask everybody, nobody knows. I have advised Commissioner Urenda sometimes when I borrow it stuff, "Come and look at this." It's empty, you know? It's empty, I rather. And if I were to run it like that with such a... I'd break it, and I'd have to fix it. So if it... I mean, that's just my opinion. So, like I told the newly-elected Commissioner, I'm gonna buy a truck, because the other one broke. With all due respect to her, and I'm not trying to spend her money. But you know, my trucks never stop, you know? They're always on the move. And if I borrow one from Maroso, and it's broken, then I have to fix it. If I borrow one from Commissioner Urenda, I got to fix it. If I borrow one from Commissioner Rualgawa, they will use them and...
So you said there's two of these Mower Max?
No.
Commissioner, mine mine is just a... It's a... For adventures. It's a machine that you can interchange the attachments. But right now, it's only for adventures. And the one I have...
I don't have a mower on it. Russian, Russian. But mine is a mower. But just in that perspective, sometimes we borrow the equipment, and then by a couple of days later, "Are you done?" And it's like, "Come on, we just borrowed this equipment." And there's times that there's been, there's been, that they're like, "Okay, we need our tractor back." So what am I supposed to do? Just begin the project, and, "Okay, come get your tractor." So that's why, if they wanna use it, fine. But the thing is, that's my motion to purchase that.
I'm just... I wanna know the amount, Commissioner.
It's a agreement on the tablet. It's 27.
Let me see here. I can't find it on my...
It's in a notebook.
Excuse me?
It's in the thing, whatever.
I understand it's on there, but I don't find it on my iPad, so I'm asking you. If you don't want me to use your iPad, Commissioner Rualgawa, can you find it for me, please?
Here.
I just needed to know the price.
And it's got several attachments: to mold, to trim.
Attachments are separate, huh?
They're all... It's all in one price.
So the price for this would be $287,715.33? And where...
I'm assuming it's five board or something?
It's five board.
And Commissioner, I also worry, what funds are you planning to use to purchase this? Thank you. Go ahead.
Judge, I just wanna make a statement for the record. I'm not here to tell anybody how to handle or equip it or anything, but I've received calls from all three commissioners, and I'm a firm believer in working in the team. When I need something, I'd like to feel comfortable that I can contact any of the three commissioners or yourself. And a lot of others know that I need help with something. Unless I know, when I receive a call, somebody needs a piece of equipment, and I'm gonna make this clear to others. I never once said, "I'm using it." "Oh, no, you can't use it." I've always, matter of fact, I've transported it for a couple commissioners, because if they really need it, I'm here to help. And I never called and say, "Hey, I need it already." I may call and say, "Commissioner so-and-so needs to use it whenever you're done." Get with him or get with her, but just for the record, I try my best to try to work for everybody, because it's expensive equipment. And this specific equipment we're talking about is considered a special piece of equipment. It's not like a shredder that you can... We all have our own shredders. But this is a piece of equipment that is specialized for certain tasks, not just for anything told. You use it maybe a percentage of the time, it will only, in reality. It's like our instructor that we have. It sits at the yard until they say, "I need it." Commissioner Aruana needs it, Commissioner Aruana, maybe Commissioner Rualgawa. But I just wanna make it clear that I don't pressure people when I'm saying, if I say, "Hey, I need it," or "Yes or that," you know? I try to work with everybody, but I'm not here to tell anybody how to do it, really. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just for the record, I'm not trying to blame anybody. I'm just telling you what has happened to me with the equipment that I bought. So Commissioner Rualgawa's got a tighter, higher-end arm in Commissioner Urenda's stuff. Everyone doesn't have one, is Precinct Two. And then... It's a lot of money, I know. But we have always said, "We can match all the other commissioners." And we're all gonna be figuring and fighting back. Well, you can vote for this, I'm not gonna vote for that. So it's up to each individual to vote with conscience.
Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion. You made the motion? There's a motion by Commissioner Duralgawa.
Select it.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Camorona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have an opposition by Commissioner Urenda. The motion carries. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Just status. Is there anybody here from the jail?
Judge, Ms. Hope Two, Admiral Montes, she says she didn't have any, since she reported her. Gave a report last week.
I'll entertain a motion to table.
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Camorona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Camorona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action, open bids for Steakhouse Road. We have three bids, four bids for Steakhouse Road. Steakhouse Road is located in Commissioner... What's Precinct, correct? We have one bid by CK Newberry LLC. And that is out of Austin, Texas. And CK Newberry has a bid for $597,486. And this is to improvement of a road. We have a bid from... Excuse me. Vega Paving. And Vega Paving is $476,090. Again, that's Vega Paving out of Eagle Pass, and that is at $476,090. We have Dirt Boys Inc., Dirt Boys Inc. out of San Antonio. And that bid is $594,880.50. We have J&amp;J Excavating Materials out of Crystal City, Texas. And that is at $386,792.70. Again, that's J&amp;J Excavation at $386,792.70. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open and close bids for Steakhouse Road. I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda, and a second by Commissioner Juan Camorona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
You have any questions?
I'm sorry?
The bids from the...
They're on page 56 in the minutes. If you want, I'll take my evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
5.2 is a discussion and appropriate action to award the bids for the Diamond H Road. Again, Commissioners, to reiterate the bids that were opened and read out loud at the last Commissioners Court meeting for the Diamond H Road, we had J&amp;J Excavation Materials out of Crystal City for $1,109,521.50. We had Vega Paving Incorporated out of Eagle Pass at $894,863.50. And then we had CK Newberry LLC out of Karn City at $1,244,500. Again, J&amp;J is $1,109,525.50. Vega Paving, $894,863.50. And CK Newberry, $1,244,500. At this time, I'll entertain any discussion in regards to awarding a bid for the Diamond H Road. Yes, ma'am.
Did Mr. Daniel Eric get back with us?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
Would you wanna table it?
I'm going to make a motion to table, gentlemen and lady, because usually we do two weeks Commissioners Court, that we don't have enough time to review. And that was my fault when Mr. Hernandez told me, "I'm gonna put it back." I forgot. We had Commissioners Court last Monday, and then again this Monday. We should have been in that time for him to review the bids and then come back with this... Review it and let us know. That was my fault. I put it way too soon, a week before, instead of waiting the two weeks.
So you're motions to table it?
Yes, sir.
I'll say.
I have a motion to table. Item 5.2 by Commissioner Duralgawa, and I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I suppose that'll be the same announcement, Commissioner. 5.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action, award bids for Concrete Slab in Carrizo Hill, Precinct Seven. I am going to motion to table this item. Again, as clarified by Commissioner Duralgawa, we did have Commissioners Court back-to-back, given that the Commissioners Court and the judge was in conference. So we had them back-to-back without that two-week period that you needed, Commissioner Duralgawa. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Duralgawa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I do have 5.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment between the general account. Do you have that for Mr. Pereda? What is your... Mr. Further record, Commissioners, and Mr. Garcia. Mr. Pereda did tender to me the budget adjustment request from professional to the insurance for 2024, 2025. I will pass this to you guys. It is $117,117. And what is that, Mr. Pereda?
No, it's 117, no cents.
Okay, you... I understand your memory.
Especially on the cents.
He's asking for it to...
The insurance was higher than what we had projected. He had given us an amount, and then when the insurance came in, it was higher than what we had told us.
But it's in the budget, this money?
Yes, yes. We're just moving from one to another.
What is the amount?
Professional services.
What is the amount change? They had four hundred and a half?
He had... No, he gave me an estimate.
To Commissioner Duralgawa.
Before the budget was done, he had given an estimate, but when we finally got it, it was higher.
Quite a bit higher, really?
Yes, quite a bit higher.
He saved what?
Yeah, there is... I think when he came before Commissioners Court to have you all approve the insurance, he did tell us. I don't remember right now, but...
You don't remember?
I remember it was higher than what we had budgeted, but I don't remember the exact amount. But it has to do with the additional buildings, the auto insurance has gone up. Do the rest. Judge, can you repeat that amount, please?
Yes, sir. That amount is $117,117. 117, comma, 117. Other questions? If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point five, Claim Document. General Fund, a hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and twelve cents. Demet County Airport, three thousand, five hundred forty-one and fifty-one cents. Demet County Golf Course, two thousand, two hundred and six dollars. Utilities, thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen and seventeen cents. Demet County Payroll, three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and twenty-four cents. COs, twenty eighteen, nineteen thousand, thirty-eight and ninety-five cents. For a grand total, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Excuse me, five hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents. I have a motion by Commissioner De Luccavola.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Ended, Mr. Garcia, at eleven sixteen, a regular meeting. The time is eleven seventeen. And I will call the Public Facilities Meeting to order. Roll call one point two, let the record reflect that all commissioners and judge are present. One point three, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one, Discussion and Appropriate Action, New Business.
Judge, just for your information, we're still working on the lights. And as you know, they have contacted all of the, covering the front.
Yes, sir. Yes, I'll get you that information. Yes, sir. Any other business, Commissioner Juan? Any other business?
No, ma'am.
I will entertain a motion to approve the report that Commissioner Juan just made on the record. I have a motion by Commissioner De Luccavola. Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Judge, just for your information, the Commissioners, uh, the public facility doesn't have the middle rail in North Soak, but it's over.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll take note of that, thank you. Three point one, Claim Document. I have Public Safety at twelve thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second, who gave me a second? Who gave me a second? I'm sorry, I'm trying to write this in.
Commissioner Lautaro.
That's what they do in, in Adiscosa County, they make you raise your hand. Commissioners' Court. Well, you have something to say?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. Go ahead. Y'all can decide, Commissioner Lautaro, who wants to do the second? He has another comment.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Just for your information, Mr. Pereira, they took the asphalt out of the public facilities. It's here.
Okay, could you have, you have border, it's still Public Facilities?
No, 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 we made a budget for the middle rail.
Yes.
Okay, so why are they taking it out of the public facilities?
Well, it's September thirtieth, so it comes out of last year's budget.
Correct.
It's September, you don't...
You say it's, uh, it's October twenty-fourth, you...
No, but it's now, but still, it's... You did the asphalt prior to September thirtieth.
So I can't use that whole deal.
It's September thirtieth, it's prior budget.
But you always have to say, cut it off in October, right?
No.
Yes.
The bill might be dated, but the, I mean, it's right now, but the invoice is September thirtieth. Because the asphalt you got back in September, right? So it's last year's bill, so we approved it.
Okay. Just so it's understood that it's not for the public facilities. Well, because they go look for it, it's not there.
The public facility is still a public facility, but border control is inside the bulk of Public Facilities and now Middle Rio Grand is also within the public facility.
It's in the record, it shouldn't be here.
But there's two different departments now within Public Facilities. But it's still Public Facilities.
Is it two different bodies? How can it be Public Facilities?
It's a corporation. So it has border control, it has the middle rail.
You're just saying it's two different departments, it's like filtered.
Within the one, uh, within the same corporation.
So I had a motion by Alonso Carmona, who was my second?
Commissioner De Luccavola.
Commissioner De Luccavola is my second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I have a, I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the Public Facilities Meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner De Luccavola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you very much.